Everybody. I need order. Roll call, please.
Ryan Neuer.
Here.
Steven Greenfield.
Here.
Amy Hemminger.
Here.
Dominic Porfacci.
Here.
Ruth Quinn. Here. Timothy Rogers.
Here.
Julie Tresco.
Here.
Stand for the pledge. The pledge is to testify in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda changes. You have a motion to accept the agenda. What have you moved?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll favor.
Bye.
Opposed. Passed at seven zero. Public comments. If you would like to address the board, please step up. Your name, your town.
Tony Osborne, Gardner, New York. I'm just here because I've written several letters about my daughter's ability to test up to varsity basketball. New York State allows this practice. She's in eighth grade. She's been playing AAU for many, many years. Last year she played on the all-boys team, Catholic youth organization. She's an exceptional athlete and I feel that the policy that she's unable to test up to varsity is not good for her as a person. My older daughter's been playing basketball in New Falls. She has a ninety-plus average. She just got a twenty-one fifty on her SATs. She's done exceptionally well because she's been involved in sports her whole time at New Falls. I think that if the, I think that the board should create some sort of amendment where coaches can have some sort of input because every coach that's ever seen her play has said she should be playing varsity, not just in New Falls but in Highland, in other places around the state, in other districts around this general area. Every coach at Sycamore said she should be playing varsity. I received a letter back saying that it was, you know, one of the reasons was a safety-related issue and I don't feel that to be the case because she's playing against varsity girls most of the year and not just, yes.
What grade and how old is she?
She's in eighth grade. As I said, she plays AAU all year. Her team is always playing up and she also plays on her sister's varsity team. AAU's a travel league of the most elite athletes in, in the state. Most of the professionals come from the AAU league or scattered in the AAU league. She's been playing in that league for a long time. I can understand the board's desire to not let this be a rampant thing, but I think in exceptional cases, the board should allow students, athletes, to be as great as they can be. My daughter is an exceptional young athlete. It's really all the same.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations. It's for resolutions and post-resolution by Steve Greenfield. Open resolutions first.
So I have some that I'd like to have us to consider voting, you know, again. So start with the first one, which is the membership dues. And a tax cap, we're under a tax cap of two percent. They're calling for a four percent increase in our dues. And so, you know, just, you know, I understand that they froze it, but to do that kind of an increase on us, I don't think is appropriate.
It's frozen for eleven, twelve.
Right. So that's one that I was just going to consider bringing up on. First one that I think we should bring up on.
I mean, I didn't get it with that. Other rationale about not voting for the dues increase from the work I've been doing on that question is that it won't tell us how it's being spent. And I'm a trustee of the taxpayers here and ultimately the dues are paid by our taxpayers and I'd like to be able to assure them that they're getting good value for the dues that they're paying and at the moment, I can't assure them of that and this is not giving me any information I could use to assure them of that despite repeated requests and I don't think we should vote yes on the dues increase.
You may.
I'm going to agree with.
All agree? That's a no.
The next one that I found troubling was the supporting RICS for data. Now I understand the need.
Resolution for.
Number three.
Number three.
We definitely need this number three. So this is all about student data, student privacy and we have a very strong resolution about that on our own board and what we want to do with student privacy and that we want to protect it. Until New York State comes out with protocols and procedures and know, and we know that it can be protected, I don't see how we can support turning this, is BOCs, I mean, and there is going to be a great need for data storage and I get that part and I don't know if, if Michelle can help elaborate, maybe even the BOCs portion of it, but my understanding of it is that there is just not enough procedure protocol for me to feel comfortable at this point. Supporting the resolution for RICS for data, did you see that resolution?
Regional Information Centers.
So it's data collection, student data and districts don't have the capacity to store data in-house, they can upload it and we have our own resolution that we passed which said that we will not upload anything beyond tier, I don't remember what it was called, certain tier level of data that the state already has anyway, but we were not going to go any further than that because of these concerns.
Right. The, the regional information centers do provide a service for the districts whereby they, they have data about the state tests, about how students performed on particular questions, they line reports on that. We don't have the capacity to do that in-house, I don't know that many districts do. It's not necessarily demographic data which we're concerned about previously. That's the service that the regional information center is providing.
I think that this is, and so what they're asking for is to see more to happen and so I don't know whether that's going up. It wasn't clear in the resolution whether they were going to have their part vendors through BOCs or not.
It didn't appear, it didn't appear that they were forcing the districts to do it?
No, it's not forcing.
It was just, it was allowing them to opt out to have access to this, especially the districts that didn't have the flexibility. So I personally didn't have a problem with this one.
And we have not had any information in our BOCs on that, so I don't have any further information on that. I don't know that they're asking, what kind of information they're asking for and we're not participating in any vendors or anything of that nature. I think the individual schools who can't house their own data, perhaps they need a place to have that information.
That's how I wrote it.
Speak to this. Sometimes you have to go reading between the lines to get more to the point of what people are really trying to do with these resolutions. This is not one of those cases. This one, they actually wrote it out, which kind of surprised me. Remember that this is, the first set of resolutions in the packet are the ones that are being proposed by the NISBA board, you know, the NISBA directors, the NISBA legislative staff. They're not things that arose organically from schools asking for RICs or anything else that's in those first set of resolutions. These are ones that came from NISBA's legislative staff. It says right here in their rationale, the first sentence is about how more and more districts are used, are needing to store data as part of their general daily operations, but the second line is the kicker for me. At the same time, districts are asked to provide increasing amounts of information to the state education department. That to me is the area of critical concern. Almost all these resolutions, I've, I've sent out some email previously regarding them, are geared towards making it easier for SED to create new information gathering mandates. I'm not interested in NISBA being part of advocacy to do that for them. That's their own business. If they want to do that, if they want to provide technology to do that, that's something they're working on at the political end, but for us as school boards, we shouldn't be saying in our own rationale for why we're doing something that we may need this storage space as a way of facilitating new data mandates that we could get from, from SED and that's exactly what they're saying in their rationale.
And actually, you have a good point about this is not coming from state districts, local school districts who are calling for need for data. These things are being built and they already exist. So this is NISBA putting more pressure on, I guess, funding them and is that what you're, this guy had?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're saying that we're going to be calling on the state to provide these, these RICS, these RICs for, for the purpose stated and I'm not interested in that.
And if I have NISBA, if I have, if I, if this is going to be fighting for something, I want them to fight for the gap elimination adjustments to get rid of that. I want them to be more focused and targeted on what they're fighting for and not necessarily on this. But I mean.
It's not really a high priority. Do we use RICS?
Yes.
We do. So we're using BOCs?
Yeah, and just for my information, if there are two small school districts out there in some BOCs, they can already tell the BOCs and the RIC, we'd like you to do this, whether this resolution is in or not. As required by the co-signing.
We're accepting it exists for a long time. The purpose of this would be.
Right. Well, I told you what they are doing, you have to, if you look at the, at the whole set of resolutions, you know, as, as a package rather than line iteming each resolution, you see what NISBA is proposing for this convention is to advocate in, over the course of four separate resolutions, building a substantial infrastructure for data mining, APPR, monitoring of Common Core. They're actually, you know, they broke it up into a bunch of different pieces, but if you add them all up together, it is advocacy for a comprehensive infrastructure project to facilitate many of the policies that we've already gone on record as opposing. So I, I don't want to support any of them that are facilitating the establishment of infrastructure.
You know what I would support? If NISBA were to create a resolution or push to make sure that student data was going to be safe within a RIC and, you know, if they were to create a resolution along those lines and answer the critique and the, and the concerns that boards, not just this board but other boards have expressed about data collection and dashboard and all the push for, for this, I would definitely be supporting something like that.
So Steve, you hold that concern from this board?
Well, he's going to have to vote one way or the other. So the paddle goes out, it's for now.
I have to raise my paddle. I really.
So there's no talking. It's like seven hundred people in the room and it's a paddle race. So it's a base of yes paddle or not. And that's the question.
Another thing to consider is that, you know, we all remember the In Bloom fiasco. This resolution and another one, at least another one that's coming up further down the booklet, are designed to allow that issue to return, you know. It's going to be like whack-a-mole. We thought we drove it out, it's going to pop back up again and these resolutions are geared towards facilitating having those things pop back up. So I'd like to not be hard at facilitating that.
Oh, okay. So one of my concerns about this resolution is that, one of the concerns that we, when we passed our resolution about student data privacy, that was geared towards In Bloom and one of, one of the concerns there was that In Bloom could not guarantee that the data was safe and I don't think that that has changed. We're just, we're changing the place where we're going to store the data, not the data, not the security of the data, so and I, that, that I know of, there's no way to ensure that the data is safe at this time anyway. So I don't even see, you know, like you said, you know, that if this were a future resolution where they do, you know, a resolution saying that data should become safely, to me, that's a no, you know, because like I said, the data, as far as we know, really can't be secure fully.
And then, yeah, right, so within our, within our student privacy, some of the concerns were about the cloud technology and other issues that come up when we use new RICS and the amount of data that they are going to want to start harvesting and collecting, even though we have a resolution in place that protects our students, is still supporting a greater push.
Your credit card information isn't safe. Your identity isn't safe, you know, so there's no reason to believe that this data would be safe either.
I guess my concerns are currently utilizing, right?
Right.
Because the idea is here will be to a great degree, but again, the rationale is we don't have to participate.
Right, we're not supporting.
Is, is the concern, Steve, that we'd be forced at this stage?
In the future, I could see that happening because if we're facilitating SED's ability to mandate data being produced by us and they do so to the point beyond what our own capacity, you know, will be using this, that's exactly what it's being set up to do. I mean, if they hadn't been so explicit in the rationale that that's what they're hoping to help facilitate, I might have been able to approach this from a different perspective.
There's, it's actually interesting because their resolution says that storing it in a single onsite server is not the best storage option and I think that an alternative is to invest in and support development of a BOCs RIC as a premier data storage facility that can accommodate even most technologically challenging needs. So.
I don't know what they mean by most technologically challenging needs. I can't, I can't, you know, interpret that.
I mean.
For me, it's just security.
Well, is that just like a local district that would be in the argument they're making? Is that districts who can't afford to pay for the technology to store their own data?
But that's already in existence, again. I think, I think that is.
But we do, but that's the.
Well, any, any two school districts with the same need have the capability to, to implement that, is what you're saying. Any, any two school districts who find themselves in needing data storage.
With a, with a.
With BOCs.
Right. Every school district in the state.
It can already be done. So I don't really understand what the purpose of the resolution is other than.
Yeah, I'm, I'd be, vote against it.
Oh, straw poll?
Uh, what, straw poll which way?
Against.
Yes.
Okay. The other big one, I mean, I'll let you guys go in order. My only other big one that I had to know was the Common Core Teacher Certification is number nine, but if anybody has anything before number nine.
Yeah, I wanted to stop at the, the next one, number four.
Yeah, sounds nice.
It's kind of connected. Again, if, it's sort of like the last one. If this statement had simply said that the New York State School Boards Association supports a dedicated funding stream to professional development and other supports associated with improving teaching quality.
Did they say that?
Who could have possibly had any problem with that? Now, just see as an example, by, by ending it the way they did with implementation of Common Core learning standards, they placed themselves squarely in the middle of something that's, that's fraught with uncertainty. Now, I know it's probably not considered a likely scenario, but let's say Rob Astorino wins this gubernatorial election. First thing he's going to do is cancel Common Core and then, then NISBA would be on record, instead of just seeking general professional development funding and support systems for whatever it is that SED will then be requiring of us, the language specifies that it's targeted towards a specific program. A program that, that is still not settled into what it is, is continuing to evolve and is, and is subject, was created by political women, is subject to change of political women. So since the language is so specific, I think it's a bad idea. It has nothing to do with whether I personally support Common Core. It's just that Common Core is in a state of flux, like I said, established by politicians, not by educators, is subject to being changed overnight by different politicians and I, I want them to just say, uh, support professional development geared towards improving teacher quality. They kind of just sent it right off the tracks by being that specific.
They could have go, support professional development.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, why would you even need a resolution for that?
Well, they're looking for funding.
Dedicated funding.
Because they want a dedicated funding stream. They want, it, it makes sense.
So.
Okay, so.
Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support a dedicated funding stream for professional development and other supports associated with implementation of Common Core in those states.
So can you just ask to amend it?
No, it's not.
Both ways, yes or no?
Not possible from the floor. Paddle up, yes paddle.
But aren't, aren't there comments from the floor about these resolutions?
There are.
Like obviously, they're not going to change it, but at least that would give you a mouthpiece to make this comment.
Right, but they, they, these are.
Then still go ahead and vote no.
It's not like there's a source for accepting a friendly amendment, you know, because since it comes from the NISBA staff and they claim that they got it by studying various member surveys on various topics, there isn't really anybody to ask if they would accept a friendly amendment. That's why these are all yes or no votes. They're, they're what they are. In any, there, I did see in my previous opportunity to serve as the voting delegate that there were some opportunities to express the, the, the issue that was causing the vote.
You're not always guaranteed to get the floor.
Right, but you may not get the floor, but the.
So sometimes there are long lines.
So why doesn't Steve try to get the floor?
I would try to get the floor, but.
And then let's just vote no for it.
Okay. That works for me. I could, I would seek the floor to just express that the last six words should have been dropped off.
Something like that.
Well, I think in, I'm going to just do, the reason why this was a big question mark for me is there's legislation right now that calls for Common Core learning standards, APPR, and part of what this is doing is changing that from an unfunded mandate into one that has a funding stream behind it and that's the part that made me pause a little bit because one of the critiques that we had about the way things are running is that, is that, you know, they're, they're throwing these mandates at us and they're completely unfunded. I'm sure we're spending a lot of money on curriculum development and aligning ourselves to Common Core and if there was a way that we could get funding for it, I think that would be an incredible.
My concern would be, I agree, you know, we are spending a lot of money on curriculum development and we, as I mentioned, I think in our last meeting, we've been very careful about where we have asked our teachers to build to, to unpack Common Core standards because there are many places who are unpacking standards through the curriculum modules that the state has provided. And my concern would be with the professional development, while I'd like to have the money, uh, but being, but if it be all modules based and what's, what kind of, what kind of professional development are they looking at and, and we in, in New Falls, when we're talking about impacting the standards, we are talking about using good teaching and good pedagogical approaches. So we're, you know, we're, we're in line with that. So my, my concern would be at that place would be what kind of professional development are they talking about, what kind of streams would be attached and is it this mandated state curriculum that's coming?
Another thing to.
That actually really.
Good point.
That's a positive point.
Another thing to remember is that NISBA has permanently, has permanently standing legislative agenda to get all mandates funded. So that makes this one suspect because it's extraneous based on, on the existence of the standard advocacy to fund all mandates, that its specificity makes it suspect.
And then, you know, what kinds of, there was a mandated tri-state rubric where it was a very wordy document which we were required, they asked us to look at our curriculum power lessons based on this tri-state rubric and it did not align with our mission and vision statement. So we wrote a rubric for ourselves that aligned with our mission and vision statement. So my concern would be to what degree is this funding going to, you know, free us to do what we do best or to what degree is it going to be another one of these mandates for the modules?
Right, and then it's supporting the script, script, or, or scripted curriculum. Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was bad, no, it's all okay.
Who else?
Good kindergarten. Favorite group of pre-K too, right?
Yeah.
Right. Sort of, I guess, I don't know. Capillary, okay, with, with the teacher certification, supporting Common Core teacher certification, so it's number nine, we're down to number nine?
Yeah, these are all good. Actually, you want, before we go, I can ask you a question about number eight, just to express it as opposed to try to see how we vote on it. It's the one where we're supporting caper leave for distressed districts. We should be supporting caper leave for everybody.
It's an interesting resolution.
You know what I mean?
Like, why is it?
It's, it's a political resolution rather than a, a general educational support resolution because basically what it's doing is it's seeking to, to minimize objections. It's like the people that are suffering the most from the tax cap will, will fix their problem, will help, and, and that'll quell the objections that everyone's been raising. But the School Boards Association is supposed to be for all 700 school boards and I don't take a position as one that's not currently in incredible distress. I think most of our taxpayers would probably disagree. They all think they'd like to pay much less than they are, but that's not how the state defines fiscal distress within a government entity. But I actually believe that, that, that NISBA should be advocating for all its school boards, not just picking the ones that are the squeakiest wheels because they're in the most trouble. We were all opposed to this.
The ones that will, if they don't do this, will go into.
Insolvency and make Cuomo look bad for having put the tax cap on them and forced them into insolvency. So this is a very political resolution and not one that NISBA is doing to advocate for all 700 school boards. We were all against the tax cap before it started. We were all against it when it hit us and the dramatic effects of it kicked in and, you know what, now that I'm thinking about it, you know, it's weird, they put you in a bad spot. It's like those bills in Congress where it makes, it makes you feel like you're like anti, anti-child abuse because you voted no on the war in Iraq and they bundled the two things into a single bill. This is, this is a case of that where you would, we would look like ogres if we voted no on this because it would appear that we're being unsympathetic to distressed districts. But that's why the people like, you know, at the legislative department over there in NISBA are, are so irksome to me. They're, they're very slick. They know exactly what they're doing. They worded it this way on purpose because they don't want to rock the political boat. They don't see that as being their role and so what they're trying to do is help Andrew Cuomo's program appear to be successful by neutralizing the biggest problems that it's causing. And I, that just makes me feel yucky, you know?
Can we do the same thing where we, as a board, ask you to try to make that comment from the floor, ask for an amendment or, you know, change the order?
But I mean, would it be the preference of the board that I still vote yes on this but with attempting to express a reservation because it's.
He could still ask to amend it from the floor, even though it won't happen, he could still make that request.
I would not vote no.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm not, I didn't bring this up to advocate voting no, I just wanted the discussion to happen, to look at the right, the, the language they used and see it, and see it for what it is.
Really interesting point, you know, and, and the rationale pretty much sums up how I'm feeling about NISBA right now. It says over seventy percent of school districts statewide receive less state, state funding in thirteen, fourteen than they received in two thousand eight, nine. The gap elimination adjustment which remains is $1.6 billion is a reflection of the reduced annual funding provided by the state. So where is the resolution calling for the repeal of the GEA?
I think they have that on, on a previous legislative agenda, actually. Yeah, I think it's from a prior.
It hasn't sunshine yet or something that might not.
Next year.
Yeah, see exempt schools from the gap elimination adjustment, it's, it's on their state aid agenda.
Okay, just incorrect.
But, you know, but still, the other issue remains, which is that this is a political resolution and not a school board relief resolution.
So why wouldn't we vote against?
The reason we wouldn't vote against it is because.
Because we'll look like ogres.
But we're going to look like ogres too. Then you explain why you're voting against it. I don't, I don't see why that's a problem.
What do you mean? Have the opportunity.
Well, here's.
So then you look like an over, right?
Here's, here's what I would suggest in this regard. There's going, I already know from numerous emails that I've gotten that there's going to be a lot of discussion time spent face to face between board members on a lot of this stuff. I think, I, I think that these districts actually need the relief in the short term if it can be accomplished. And I'm willing to concede that in exchange for the ability to come back next year early with a school board sponsored resolution that comes from the grassroots to say to NISBA, now we want relief for everybody. We gave you what you wanted last year, but. now we want relief for everybody. We gave you what you wanted last year, but we want, we want you to advocate for no more 2% tax cap for the entire spectrum of your school boards. And see how they rationalize being against it. They're almost always against grassroots supply resolutions. I'm sure you saw when you looked at the book. Um, I think we can, you know, I think we can let this one ride. I think we can make a statement. I think we can network with other school boards and get what we want out of them next year.
Yeah, I would not vote no, not no on this and not because of how we might appear, but because I wouldn't take it upon myself to make somebody else's school district speak on already. I wouldn't use them to protest if their funds are needed there, or I wouldn't feel comfortable.
I'm, I'm this close to being with you. You know that. I always am. This kind of stuff, it goes either way. And this is one of the times I gotta swim with the relief for the people who need it and solve the rest next year.
Okay, so we'll go yes.
So we'll yes, and if I get the opportunity to express a concern, I'll, I'll do so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't on this one.
No?
Not yet. I would, I would do it more powerful, getting together with other districts if possible, and we're doing something mutually.
Okay, why?
Um, I think it's premature. Um, I think that we can do it more powerfully if we have better data and if we have more voices behind us.
Well, I think expressing the concern just puts it out there. It means you kind of announce it to the whole room, it's the 300 people in it that we need to talk about this. That's why I-
I'm just wondering how many times they're gonna let him up to the mic.
I feel like if this, I mean, I'd be careful.
If I had to go up to the mic, I would be careful about which ones.
Right, so if you were gonna choose, if you were gonna choose this one or the-
But if they don't let you up to the previous one, I wanna be able to at least try again for this one, right? You don't know which one they're gonna let you talk about, so.
Right, but if you were, you could choose one, you choose the teacher.
Okay, so here's the thing. Okay, so the one, the, the resolution that comes right after it is the Common Core teacher certification where I do have a stronger opinion on. And if you were going to speak on number eight, um, I may wish that you spoke on number, you know, been able to speak on number nine.
Well, yes, but in a sense, speaking on the ones that we're voting no on is only telling people why we voted no. The vote registered as a no. I kind of like the idea of speaking about the one that, that we're gonna vote yes on. As a way of letting people know, but we're voting yes, but we have a reservation and, and we think it's gonna need to be talked about.
I think you gotta feel out the situation because you may be able to get the mic. You might not be. There will be kind of several people who wanna comment on these resolutions or whatever. You're gonna have to read the situation, so I'm fine giving Steve that.
And maybe it's just a bigger point of communicating with school boards.
Yeah. Trust me, there's, there's gonna be a lot of networking this year. It's a special year. Words out. All right, so we're up to nine now.
Let's talk about number nine. Resolutions supporting Common Core teacher certification.
Just the online record is being against this, so I'll let someone else.
Well, I think I'm on record for being against it too. Um, increasingly concerned with, um, what is being placed on new teachers coming out of school and the requirements that they have, including the, um, video, um, B D T T A, which makes it really difficult for them to even get out of the door. And do you know what it is? The E D T V A, they're coming into class. So I've had to sign several releases for my kids so that a teacher who's, who's teaching in a classroom can, I'll go record video that shows them getting a lesson plan, that shows the student work that, and, and in some ways, you know, this is all going for not just them, but it has, it's not just a part of their record. That information is being, you just go up to state ed as well. And that's where I have a real big issue. Um, in terms of, you know, that they're creating modules.
We have difficulty with, uh, with, uh, new, um, acquiring ourselves and hence the issues. I think it came in about a year ago. We had to, we went to lawyers about that to say, you know, we can't do this. So we have concerns in terms of privacy.
So, um, and I just feel that this is not the place for NISBA to be, um, putting any kind of push to create more of a mandate, to create more of an obstacle, to create, you know, I just don't see that as a need. I think that when we get our teachers and train them, I think that's, we're looking at, um, number nine, the resolution, um, supporting Common Core teachers certification. So, um, and then to start the dialogue, which says that I do not support that.
Yeah, we agree with that.
And we put up the videotaping, that's not necessary. We put up the videotaping, that's not part of the certification. It's where we have the, students, parents have to sign off, so we need teachers to have videotaping themselves.
So I feel like it's, they're making it more and more difficult for teachers, acting on teachers. And I don't want NISBA to advocate for that. All right, so we're all, this looks like it.
Which brings us to speaking for this topic. Justifying, we're in this number ten.
Oh, number 10.
Number 10.
No.
Building towards number 10.
What's number 10 again?
Supporting users' student performance in A P P R.
Oh, right, never mind.
He listened to say that the superintendent, he saw it came out pretty strongly against that recently, at least in the lower Hudson region. They presented a unified statement that it ends up having cascading effect into other parts of the A P P R and other issues. They actually declared that it's not something that can be fixed, that it has to be completely tossed and started from scratch. And I'm, I'm comfortable agreeing with them on that. You're the ones who are doing the work.
Anybody else? Number 10 gets the buzzer.
So the next is the Affordable Care Act, the Annual School Budget Collection and Vote, and the Medicaid Care Premium Reimbursement Under N I ship. These were the ones that, um, NISBA is not recommending, so we wanna, I mean, I have no problem supporting that, not recommendation.
Yep.
Just what's on the table. So that was it. Do you wanna know what the, what, what one you were gonna say?
Because it's kind of curious, right?
I am dying. I apologize for the interruption.
Uh, membership dues, resolution number two. Um, we're asking Steve, as our delegate, to vote no on that. So where they wanna increase the dues by 4% or some other amount, whichever is less. So we're not upgrading NISBA to create certain- So number three, supporting R E C S for data. We had some reservations about that in terms of, you know, because we have privacy and it's a privacy issue anyway, so we felt that this was also a problem. Supporting state aid for professional development, number four. Because it specified Common Core, we don't know if they're gonna try to make us do modules as part of the spring patch that we voted. Um, and it has, what we all have.
That's two different laws, but I just thought I'd point it out. It's two, the, the local curriculum is a different law than professional development, it's just the same.
But the resolution doesn't, doesn't approach it that way.
Resolution specifically needs-
I'm not arguing, I just want to make sure. Okay, so that's a no. And then going down, not again until it gets to, resolution number nine, supporting the number you walked in. Perfect, so you're caught off.
We're up to number 12.
Number 12. Annual school budget election and vote.
I have concerns about number 12. While the resolution that Elmsford wrote has imperfections, particularly with the November election. In fact, since this is a, a, a district's supplied resolution, it may actually be eligible for a friendly amendment. But regardless, while it's clear that, you know, the November thing can't happen, when you look at a district like ours, you know, we had, we're in seven different towns. How would anyone figure out how to get the ballots set up? You know, during a general November election to make it happen for just our district? That, that part of the objection, like I said, that, that clarity imperfection side, I have a huge objection to a portion of the statement by the Resolutions Committee and objecting to it.
So you have an objection to the objection?
Yeah.
Okay, I just-
Which is, I have an objection to the rationale that the Resolutions Committee is using. I, I think that the, 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 uh, the other parts of this resolution that don't deal with the November date are actually quite sound. Um, the only part that, that is a stumbling block for me is the portion dealing with November. The rationale that the Resolutions Committee used to shoot this down is something we all, we all reject, you know? Anybody on all 700 school boards in the entire state know that the biggest stumbling block to anything we're trying to do is this coupling of the property tax and the referendum of the, of the, you know, every other government body in the United States, from, from village board to, to Congress of the United States operates on a republican form of democracy. The people elect their representatives to become expert on the topics and then they, they implement policy. And then if you don't like the policy, you throw them out at the next election. But that's how everything operates. The only place that doesn't operate that way is school boards. And it's not just about capital projects, it's about the budgets too. Every single thing we do couples the property tax, a powerful motivator, to the local referendum, against, against a local referendum with the, with the requirement that those referendums be held. And that's, that's the thing that holds school districts back the most. So why NISBA would include a whole paragraph in its rationale about why that's so good and this resolution would, would remove it, I, I, I felt like I was in the Twilight Zone. I couldn't believe I was reading that. And I feel like the, the November issue is a very minor component of what this resolution is seeking to do. And I think that our Resolutions Committee's rationale is so outrageous and so counter to what we all know to be the actual interest of school districts that we, that we hope to achieve. I'd like to vote yes. You know, I'd like to say we think this should happen. I, I think that districts that are staying under 2% should be able to not be subject to the referendum. I think that, you know, other components of this, this proposal, I like them.
The November part is really important.
It's a stumbling block.
We did research that because it came up at one of our first, I think it came up at the presentation that you did.
Right, that's the first thing, it can't be done, I know that.
The Gardner one, who did, you did that one. And that's when I did some research and looking at, we have 700 towns.
Right, it can't be done. I, I-
It's very, very, it was so complex, it just wouldn't work.
But how do we message NISBA? Is that something we also do with networking and kick the next year's agenda? That this support for the combination of the property tax and the, and the referendum is just not what we want them doing? That just doesn't make any sense. Should we just make that again something we network for and go to next year? Cause that's a terrible statement they put there in that book. Look, terrible.
It's unfortunate that the resolution ties both of these things together.
But we can't fix broken resolutions.
No, we can't.
But there's-
Yeah, we don't fix it by voting yes. So let's just-
Well, it's gonna lose.
So, but I, I, I would say that if there's oomph or gaud in there, that's something to bring back into lack and see if there's something that we can craft something better.
Yeah, it seems like we could take, we could take the discussion from this resolution and use it for our own devices.
Right, I could say, I think this final paragraph of their rationale is incredibly germane to the conversation that's scheduled next on the agenda.
Great. Okay, so we're gonna go yes, or we're gonna vote no?
You could go away.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Okay, this is the, to this question.
We're gonna agree with NISBA that this one should be-
Right, they're recommending it.
You're gonna vote no?
Yeah. All right.
I know, it's hard, I know, it's, it's, it's a, yes, we're voting no, in agreement with NISBA. They're saying that we should not accept that, so we're in agreement with that. Or do you think we should? Number 13, the Medicare premium reimbursement under N I ship.
Can I just explain what it is?
Yes, yeah.
Sure.
We're in N I ship and, and people on, on, who pay Medicare, we reimburse them. But the law changed a couple of years ago, well, two parts of it. One is people who make, I call it, large incomes at retirement, maybe 100, 200,000 a year, they pay now more for Medicare because they make larger incomes. It's been interpreted now that the school district has to reimburse them that additional amount. We're not making more. It's they, they're making more, so they pay higher premium, but now we have to reimburse them for that higher premium rather than the standard amount. Kind of seems a little backwards why the school district has to reimburse more because they're making more income at retirement.
Right, so I think what this resolution is mentioning is that they're saying-
It's just saying that we exempt school districts from having to do that.
Right. And basically, and school boards say this is not a good resolution.
Correct.
And are you saying this is not a-
I think it is a good resolution. I think it should, more should vote yes.
And they, their rationale, and this is where I didn't have enough information on the law. So when you go through their rationale piece, it sounded like legally we were obligated to do this.
Right, and they're suggesting the resolution is to change the law. So we're not legally obligated. We're still paying Medicare, but not the extra amount because the retiree is making a large income.
Do you follow that? Okay, so let's try to, let's try to understand this because when, when, the comment I'm having is that this is a resolution that from NISBA is saying that we should reject this resolution. So now I'm all of a sudden caught in my double negatives about this resolution and whether it's supposed to be accepted. So I just wanted to make sure.
Let's forget what NISBA wants. You never forget what NISBA wants. And Rick's recommendation is that you would vote no on this resolution.
No.
No.
So that's all you need to know, whether NISBA likes it or not is the point, isn't it?
Well, the rationale, I wanna direct Rick and see if he has a response to it.
Sure.
In their argument for rejecting it, they're feeling that if this were to actually happen, should school districts seek to have special status to not comply with the same rules as other participant districts? Are left open to the very real possibility that they might use the option to participate in the state plan at all? See, they're worried more about an aftereffect of this happening than the thing itself. If they feel that it's something that's essential to the financing of how, uh, N I ship operates. And obviously, you're the one who really knows all the details about that, not us. But that's what they're expressing. They feel that we might, it could result in us losing the option of participating in the program because it's creating a separate category of participation that they may not be interested in continuing. So.
Rick, doesn't this only apply to N I ship?
Yes. Yes, but let me address Steve's thing. This does not give any additional revenue to N I ship. This is, we still pay for N I ship, as does anyone else who participates. We pay, you know, 90% or 85% of our pay by pay. Anyone who's retired by state law is required, the participating districts who are in N I ship are required to reimburse them for their Medicare premium. Been doing that for decades. What changed about three years ago is this new thing called Irma, which is what this refers to. And Irma, basically, I don't know what the letters stand for, but basically, it's people who make larger incomes at retirement. Federal government says you pay more for your Medicare premium than everyone else. Most people pay a standard amount, and then we reimburse them. Now, if you're someone like Donald Trump, you make lots of money at retirement, um, you have to pay more for yours. But now they're saying that because we're participating, we have to reimburse that additional amount, not just the standard amount that they reimburse them, we have to reimburse them more money to the, to the retired employee, not to N I ship. To the retired employee, we can reimburse them.
So why would, so why would N I ship, why would this affect N I ship? There is no-
Right, there's not, no negative impact. You know, I have some-
No, you don't impact for us, for us, it's an impact for the retiree.
To give you numbers, most employees are paying about a hundred dollars a month reimbursing them for Medicare. To give you numbers, most employees are paying about a hundred dollars a month reimbursing them for Medicare. If they're making a large enough income, they have to reimburse them four hundred dollars a month because they're making a large income at retirement.
Okay, so I'm following Rick, but I'm not following the rationale.
Right, now that I'm following you, it seems like what they're saying doesn't make sense. The complete paragraph reads, according to New York State Department of Civil Service, a hundred fifty-six school districts currently participating in NISHIP's empire plan. While the inclusion of IRMA is, and reimbursement purposes and cost increase is one that all participants request, should school districts seek to have special status? But you're saying that this is, this is both revenue and cost neutral to NISHIP?
Yes.
That it's just between us and Medicare?
Between leapfrogging right over, right over, right over to retiree.
Right, we're leapfrogging right over NISHIP in this and that they're not even involved? So what? I guess you probably know why they'd say that.
The only thing I slightly agree with the rationale, Rick, I think it should apply to anyone, NISHIP, not just school districts, but this is, I think, I don't think it should apply, you know, if you're making four hundred thousand at retirement and you're retired from town of New Falls, why should they pay four times as much too? If they're NISHIP, but I have no problem with starting with school districts.
So your understanding, I just want to be reminded one more time before I take a position on this is that this is actually neutral to NISHIP?
Yeah, NISHIP is not receiving a retirement revenue from this, not a penny. I send a check to Mr. Jones' retiree. Nothing to NISHIP.
I am changing my thought on this. So whichever way I have to be on it.
You want to vote yes?
This is thirteen?
This is thirteen.
I should refer to the information from, he's just the superintendent for business, which is his job. Thank you, and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
It's a yes. Resolution thirteen. Before we move on, just to point out that you can make proposals to amend resolutions on the floor. Any amendments not mailed to NISBA by September nineteenth or to the membership by September twenty-sixth, either as part of the amendments in the rebuttal brochure or by a member board, will have to be submitted in writing at the rostrum, moved, seconded, and voted upon at the annual business meeting. The majority of those voting is necessary to approve an amendment. Annual business meeting happens during the convention at one P M.
Could it be done? True?
One day on October twenty-seventh, one P M.
And you're back in the little section.
I remember, I thought it had to be done in writing.
It does have to be done in writing because you have to submit it in writing at the rostrum if it's after September twenty-sixth.
In other words, you have to draft it down and submit it and write it with the conference.
Would anyone care to revisit Resolution Four and just offer as an amendment to strike the last half of the line? Because then we could support it. A professional development one? I mean, that just sort of leaves it as a vague support for having paid it for professional development, but, you know, we could support that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Any money for that? So you have to come up with the language so that it could be written, because you have to submit by writing, right? Or would we just simply ask to strike?
Everything after...
You have to submit whatever you're choosing to do in writing. So you give them a document that may take that resolution and propose that there's a precedent amendment to strike this section.
Everything following the words developer.
Right, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association shall take an extreme for professional development.
Period.
Period.
Now, with the rationale, does it matter that the rationale is very different?
Who cares? Okay, that's their rationale.
Rationale is... I'm for that.
Everybody okay with that?
I like the idea of that.
So should they adopt your amendment?
Then we'd vote yes.
Vote yes.
Excuse me, that, that would be our then.
That's a good question.
It's a good question.
What was the question here?
You write a supplement and with number twelve, we straighten the limit.
Black number twelve.
Number twelve. I asked for dual preschool district, where this case, the...
But then how, how logistically would you do that?
No, you can't, I think that Rick's ready to stop talking.
No, 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 I think only that, I think, my sense, my memory of the way it was written is that it, it, you couldn't just strike that part, it would still be left with language difficulties.
Exactly.
No, 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 I'm saying, okay, I'm saying... I'm saying that...
No, the language does allow it.
The vote would still be made, but if you're at or below the cap, you wouldn't be the vote.
Right.
That's what it says, if you take out the November part.
Yeah, you actually can, it's written in a way that makes that part more comfortable.
What number is this?
Twelve.
Oh, then that's good.
So seek legislation that eliminates everything, yeah.
On school budgets for such public school districts that remain at or below the tax levy cap.
What number is this one?
Resolution number twelve. So we can strike...
You're gonna have to take the master to write the document to give to him.
Everything from establishes to end, November end.
Can you pause it out and that way that can go to Dusty?
I just discussed that with her. Yes. No, I don't have anything on here, go ahead with what you said.
Okay, so we would strike everything from... Well, the New York State School Boards Association shall seek, shall seek legislation that... And you would strike everything from establishes to end at the end of line three.
So the resolution would be resolved that the New York State School Boards Association shall seek legislation that eliminates the public vote on school budgets for such public school districts that remain at or below the tax levy cap.
Yeah.
Public school districts wishing to exceed the tax cap and/or put forward separate proposals to spend above the cap will hold public elections as per current state law.
Yep, got it.
Do you do that?
I got it. Sorry.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Fine with that, so we've got two, finally.
Two amendments, two different names.
Oh, they're gonna hate you. Not the school board numbers, but the people who picked up this document. But as, as FDR said in his famous speech, I welcome that.
Is there a, are there rules in the book about how many copies we need to have when you're doing a stuff? I remember something from two years ago.
She'll look at it and she'll call, and you'll call.
Because there's something that like you have to have a certain number available.
A lot of pre-decations. Little. Okay then.
Research and proposed resolutions, Stephen Greenfield.
Okay, for starters, oh, look at that, it actually just came in. I was gonna say, the attempt to get the, um, the resolution from, uh, from Pleasantville, which seemed to have reached them after the close of business hours, is now suddenly returned to me with an attachment, uh, resolution on NISBA reviews and affiliations dot com. So let me open that before we, is that okay with everyone if I open that? That was requested, so I'm gonna... And while I'm waiting for it to open, I don't know if everyone got the, the last email I sent, if all seven of us read it, about the, um, the minutes I found from September, from a September meeting of the Pleasantville Board where they were reporting on their regional meetings, where it seemed like the consensus from everyone there was that they were all aghast at this kind of events and resolutions they saw that didn't seem to make any sense to them at all. So it's not like we're, um, out on a limb or, or, or out of the mainstream and having noticed those same things and reacted. Okay, wow, how short, let's see. I should, I should consider this instructive. "We resolve that until further instruction, the Pleasantville Union Free School District and its governing body does not authorize any payment of dues or any other monies to the New York State School Boards Association. In addition, we demand that the New York State School Boards Association provide full disclosure of its funding sources for the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fourteenth, fifteenth school years for itself and its Student Achievement Institute or any other related association under the supervision of NISBA." See, now, if Pleasantville had, like, an angry hair-tricked guy like me on their board, then everybody in New York State would have found out about the Student Achievement Institute all at the same time. But I find this interesting that they actually are highlighting the Student Achievement Institute as a particular area of concern. So that's interesting. All right, back to the, the, um, the proposed resolution. I've, I've made some adjustments to it myself since, since last we spoke. And, and, and I looked at it again and it turns out that most of the length, in fact, the first, the first four whereas's were all about, um, mostly about the Student Achievement Institute itself and how it's, how it was created and how it's funded. And while that's, you know, it is typical to have that stuff in your whereas section, you're not up to the be it resolved section, you do want to say, what's, what's the trouble here? And so, um, you know, that's not the op, uh, uh, operational part of the resolution. I, I, I crossed off the part with the September twenty-ninth, canceled the poll, that's extreme. Yes, I must have just been in a bad mood that day because that was the day that happened. So, so I, I, I took that out. But the, uh, the previous one, the short one about the advocacy materials being on the website, that's, that's legitimate, that's there and that's part of the S A I. I don't know if I'm proposing right now that, that we suspend dues because I would like to maintain our membership for at least as long as it takes for us to legitimately be able to request some of the payment and funding information. If we're not members, then we're probably not entitled to that information since this is gonna be a process that's not gonna end on October twenty-seventh. I, I think we actually need to make our payment when the next bill comes for us to do that so that we can then claim, if we want to know what David Little or Timothy Kramer are being paid, that they actually have to answer those questions or any other questions that we want to have asked. So I, I also took out anything in the be it resolved section that refers to, um, uh, asking anybody to resign or to, I actually also, in the first part, in the, in the first opening, I, I also cut out the expressing and no confidence and I was trying to replace it with language that sounded, expressing a redirection of the mission to...
So I have a resolution holding this accountable to representing the concerns of New York State school districts.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Well, here's the thing, is that I, I, as I mentioned in some of my emails, I found that to be, um, a little ineffectually vague. Now, you saw that, that Pleasantville was there with their much shorter thing. You know, are specifically seeking the end of the, of the, of, of the Student Achievement Institute. Actually, though, I think we, we need to have at least one thing that we want them to do, right? I mean, if, if we're saying that you've, you've strayed from your mission, but we're not telling them what made us think that and we're not giving them at least one thing that they can address that, that would make us feel like they're responding to our concerns, then we're not really either...
So why not Student Achievement Institute?
I, I think we should, we need to include the Student Achievement Institute.
Like what Pleasantville did?
Yeah, so...
Like that adds the, the one thing that we want.
To what, to what Ruth was saying, I, I really...
See, I, I, to me, it's not about getting rid of a program or getting rid of, doing something like that. For me, it's more providing a balanced approach. To me, it's more about providing us feedback on what, um, you know, what their track record is in terms of advocating for us.
Right, it's more about this particular group being an advocate for schools.
So if they're, if you look at... Right, so if you look at the A P P R, what we're holding our teachers accountable for, I almost feel like we can ask them to create their own rubric and hold themselves accountable to the same...
But there's actually, yes, yes, but that's an accountability, they wanted that. To show like an annual, um, professional review and progress report, yes. Did you accomplish anything on your legislative agenda? How many meetings did you hold with legislators to try to accomplish them, right? That's the kind of stuff we need to find out. We don't necessarily, you know, but, but as far as this, there's one thing we know about the Student Achievement Institute, which is that it is a hundred percent funded by S E D and its curriculum was a hundred percent designed by S E D. Okay, this is somebody else's program that they paid NISBA to deliver to school boards. It's reverse lobbying, it's a specific thing. And I really feel that we need to say, along with the general aims of the resolution, that it is inappropriate, that you must cease taking programming and programming funding from the agency you're supposed to be lobbying on our behalf and using it to lobby us with their curriculum and their money. This is, this is beyond straying from the mission. This is a direct conflict of interest and we have to specifically request that programs funded through S E D that are aimed at school boards have to stop.
What do you think?
Okay, so I do see a lot of, okay. What I think honestly is that this is a much stronger, could be a much stronger, and I want to get something that we can actually vote on today. And I don't know that I'm prepared to go all that way with the Student Achievement Institute right now because I don't understand it fully. Although I do see that there's a conflict in interest and I can follow that line easily.
Well, then let's pursue that line.
NISBA is supposed to be advocates for school boards.
Yeah, can we ask for like a clear delineation?
Having, putting out programs that are funded by the state is a clear conflict of...
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. And that's what should be a whereas.
Right, whereas, exactly.
Why all the whereas's if not just a solid resolution like Pleasantville?
Right.
They just get lost, people don't read.
Right, and that's where I would...
Get to what you really want and put it out there.
I, I had it just as I almost agree.
Well, if you need a whereas, you should speak to a rationale.
Well, I would say that...
You could do that in your free letter.
See, we can start with just something very simple, which is whereas the central school districts is due paying number of the New York State School Boards Association and whereas the New York State School Boards Association is established as an organization to provide, you know, what their mission is.
Take that right from your issues.
Right. And then, um, you know, the next... Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We like them to fulfill their mission. I think that you're putting an absolute...
And, and then just do it like a very, very simple, almost bare bones resolution at this point to be followed by much, like going into lack, to be followed by much more targeted resolutions that can flesh out exactly some of the other issues. The reason why I don't want to go with the, with just a, a full-on attack of the student achievement is to right off the bat is I'm concerned about one thing is that, you know, this is a, you know, the Common Core is part of legislative act and there is training that is necessary. So there is a point that, you know, we do need to...
It's not a training program. I, I read every single bit of it on, on the website. It is, it is not a training program. It is not a program to teach school boards how to better implement Common Core within their districts and how to allocate resources. It's all online, the videos... What's that?
That's not even our job.
Right, but even if it were, it's not a training program. It's modules that are in it, say things like, you know, dispelling the myths about Common Core. The speakers are, seriously, I sent everyone the flyers and the things, the train, the materials, the website materials that I'm asking them to remove.
But I guess what I'm saying is I see a broader issue with NISBA.
Let me finish. This program is lobbying us. That's what it is. It's S E D getting a bunch of money together and having our advocacy group lobby us instead of using our money to lobby them. As far as this particular program, the reason that this other school district is addressing it and obviously other ones that they conferred with in Westchester and Putnam, uh, and certainly what caused my attention about it and why I think you can't leave it out, is that it exists. It's the thing that's there. If we don't ask that this be stopped, then they're gonna keep spending all... If we don't ask that this be stopped, then they're gonna keep spending all of next year operating it. The money's there, the money's there, they're authorized to spend it. They're gonna continue this operation unless they're pressured to stop it.
But let's do two resolutions. Let's have a, a broad-based resolution that says you need to narrow your focus, NISBA, and advocate on behalf of school boards. So that's our resolution for tonight and then we'll work on something that's specific to student achievement. Like, cause we can do that within the next month.
The first resolution has to also include that, that, um, that any, any funding from sources that represent a conflict of interest, such as the State Education Department, that has to be in the first resolution, not the second one. And then if we wanna have a second resolution specifying that we'd like that Student Achievement Institute to be dissolved, that's okay, but the first resolution has to have the, the opposition to conflict of interest funding.
I like the idea of, of kind of having several opportunities to voice this concern. If we use all of our ammunition now, it, it's like a, a, you know, to take from our master plan, like individual phases.
Well, like you're saying, you'd like to do, address the Student Achievement Institute sometime down the road and, and just not deal with it tonight, even though they're gonna continue operating the program?
No, we're not, we're not ignoring it.
I think the other self.
What, what we're doing is we're drawing a line in the sand, we're, we're putting something out there and then we're gonna come back, write another resolution.
NISBA on notice.
And then, and it's gonna be referring to our first resolution. Well, just, I, I think a series of resolutions is the key.
What I'm asking is do you wanna do that tonight or do you wanna do that sometime in the future?
Yeah, which one?
Because the second, the second resolution-
We don't need to do the second one tonight. Ruth was expressing concerns about getting some, you know, she wanted to feel more solid about what exactly we're commenting on or why we're critiquing Student Achievement Institute. So, we can use that time. We can do that at lack on the, on the twenty eighth.
I think it's a good idea to make like what Tim said, one, resolution tonight, it sort of puts NISBA on notice and then the lack committee can take that resolution and work from it to create the next step.
No one's gonna hear the first thing you say. We gotta say this multiple times.
Exactly. And the other problem with rolling it all together is it does become muddy. And you don't hear all the points when you have too many points in a resolution. And the most critical thing for us to do is put NISBA on notice right now. Um, I think your research, you, you did a tremendous amount of research and I've read everything that you've put together. So I don't want you to think that I'm dismissing what you read or that I didn't understand what was presented. But I haven't also had the opportunity to call NISBA or to talk to NISBA about Student Achievement Institute and hear-
Steve, you know what I like? I like the general resolution now. And then we write a specific resolution that refers to our general resolution. It's almost like we have a Student Achievement Institute resolution.
The first one, you're telling them there's a conflict of interest and that's not accepted.
Right.
And then the second one, you start following up with whatever conflict.
We've created a framework and then we can, we can add additional-
So we talked about the conflict of interest without necessarily calling for them to disband Student Achievement Institute, but we can call it out.
But there's a, there's, there's a contradiction on our part in doing that because you all got the letter from Tim Kramer, right? I said, on my copy, it said CC, it had all your names on it. He wrote right in that letter, "We have always been completely transparent about the source of the Student Achievement Institute funding, that it came from SED and that they got it from Washington, from Race to the Top Funds." And, and he's very clear and he's actually right in the website, in the history trail of this thing of how it was developed and announced. They were transparent. If we're gonna go on record saying that we're opposed to, to creating an SED-funded program inside NISBA that's, that's aimed at, 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 advocating to school boards and we already know factually from NISBA, Tim Kramer wrote to all of you saying, "This is a one hundred percent SED-funded program", then why leave it out? That's what we know about.
Because it's like two resolutions are better than one.
I think Ruth didn't say leave it out, she said, "Don't call for the disband."
But, but we are effectively calling for the dissolution of it because we're saying no taking money from SED and this program is a hundred percent money from SED. So how do you separate the two?
But why?
What do you mean, but why?
Because money from SED is a conflict of interest.
It's a conflict.
I think that, that our first resolution should call for NISBA to divest itself from all present funding from SED and reject all future funding.
Right, and that would actually encompass the Student Achievement Institute because it's covered by that funding. So you're kinda dealing with a, a, a nuance in leaving out the specific institute because you're already dealing with the way it's getting funded and asking for that to stop. Now, if you think that that's better, um, a better sequence in terms of the effect of the advocacy, I don't wanna fight you on that, that's, that could work. But I don't want, I don't want us to neglect the matter of, of the SED funding and that we're rejecting conflict of interest. But that has to be in tonight's resolution.
Sounds good.
Okay, I agree.
So, someone figure out an act today.
Well, I think you said something very nice. You just came up with an excellent line.
There's a way to mail it. So it's a, it's a very simple, um, heading on the resolution. And I can read it out and then I can send it so that there's no need for, I can do the taking of it and it's perfect and that way you can just email it right from the stable to everybody that we can all be on the same page.
So you're gonna have to go ahead.
This Brian's really good left line too. We don't wanna forget that. I wrote it down because I like the way, I mean, we're-
We're not gonna have a twelve whereas fifteen sentence, uh, be a resolved resolution, we're gonna keep it simple. So, um, the title will be a resolution holding NISBA accountable to representing the concerns of New York State school districts. And I want words with that.
Read it back again.
Okay. A resolution holding NISBA accountable to representing the concerns of New York State school districts. Brian.
Is that, is that taken from the mission statement or is that in some of the whereas?
Can we add exclusively representing? That they should just be a school boards advocacy group and not- How about exclusively representing?
Solely, like represent-
Sole, you know-
Solely or exclusively, like where's your light?
I like exclusively.
So that changes the test. So, a resolution holding, it could be hold number two, hold. A resolution to hold NISBA accountable to exclusively represent the concerns of New York State school districts.
Do you have some on the mission statement in your resolution?
I don't know.
Maybe you have.
Cause I just, the most effective thing, use their words and then add stuff like exclusively.
Their mission statement is-
Where they're conflicting with their own meaning.
The mission statement is, is broad.
They have a long mission.
We're trying to-
But no, we're just gonna take a few.
There's still good, there's still good lines to do.
Okay, unfortunately, um, NISBA is not one of the, um, um, websites that I can tap into from here. I could probably do a few.
Their mission is one line. She's got, okay, go for it.
The New York State School Boards Association provides leadership to school boards for advocacy, information, and programs. That's their mission.
But then they break it up into explaining ghostly things.
Leadership, advocacy, and, uh, programs.
And they believe in, they have all the priorities.
There's a section about the advocacy that's below it, which I also can't pull up. So you'll find it a little lower down on the page.
It says, "Under advocacy, the goals advocacy promote the value of public education. Position NISBA as the quote, 'leadership voice in enhancing public education. Builds collaborative relationships and strategic partnerships to support NISBA's positions."
Same as part of it.
That's one of the tricky parts.
Protect school boards.
Yeah, there's so many very close.
Protect school boards is an important one.
Doesn't mean you're supposed to take it personally.
Yeah.
And you can take that.
But it's, it doesn't matter, but you're, but it's okay because, you know, the first whereas, whereas the New Paul's Central School District is a dues-paying member of the New York State School Boards Association and whereas the New York State School Boards Association is established as an organization to provide leadership, advocacy, and programs to school districts. And whereas, we have this one.
And where, how about just like, and whereas the, the, uh, whereas we believe that the, that the core function of NISBA is to be the central advocacy agency for school boards. Because they're so vague, they're gonna say, oh, well, student achievement, it's a program, it's, it's covered by our mission statement. That's what I'm trying to, that's why I wrote the line of expressing a, a redirection of the mission or something. And that's not good language, but you understand what I'm saying. We wanna be more narrow than what their existing mission statement says. Because their existing mission statement, as Tim Kramer wrote in his letter to all of us, gives them more than enough wiggle room to say that the SAI is fine. So, and that's what we're trying to not have.
How about say something like, like rich-
When we concentrate on our own focus.
Yeah, that it's prime, that it's prime focus be as, as our advocates. As advocates for all school districts, for school, all school boards.
So whereas, whereas the New Paul's Central School District, like, most districts, or all districts in New York State are suffering from, under the new education reform agenda combined with this investment of public education, including, you know, that kinda stuff.
Oh, I guess, I would leave that out unless you wanted to replace it with, as like all districts were suffering.
Then whereas the New Paul's Central School District. Well, it should be, okay, so what this would be, would be a paragraph of whereas that would set the New Paul's Central School District up as, um, a district that needs strong, you know, we need our organization to take strong stances in order to protect us just like any other, you know, so that's the, that's the paragraph that we need to guide people.
Strong and uncompromised.
Uh, I have a question. Do we want this resolution to be specific to New Paul's or do we want it to be something that Steve proposed on the floor of the convention?
I'd rather see it more gentle.
Yeah, I would too.
Not specific.
By the way, it takes a two-thirds approval on the floor to introduce a complete, brand-new resolution from the floor, but at least you get the opportunity to seek that vote.
That's another reason why it needs to be really concise.
Yeah.
Cause we could get that kinda support. It's easy to understand.
What, and then you could actually send it out like you did some of the other research that had a lot of-
Yeah.
And say, "I'm presenting this on the floor, I'd like your support."
Well, no, I would definitely be doing that and I would definitely spend the same five, ten hour days.
And this time you would be speaking for the board as well as yourself.
So we would just write the first whereas, so it's not even about the New Paul's Central School District being a dues-paying member. We would just start with, whereas the New York State School Boards Association is established as an organization to provide leadership, advocacy, programs to school districts. And whereas school districts are increasingly under duress. That could be very simple and leave it as that.
But we're, there's so much more duress than just financial duress, you know?
Tell us about it. I'm just saying.
No, and whereas, okay, so, and whereas what? Um, uh, strong accountability, some, some, this is where we're at, it's, it's, um-
Among, that among its, among its various activities, that NISBA's core function is to serve as policy advocates for its member school boards. Establishing that, that's your prime function.
Yeah.
Everything else is extras. If you have, if you have spare time, you can do that other stuff. That we're establishing that the prime function-
A main core function is to serve as policy, what do you say?
Policy advocates for its member school boards.
Yeah, that's good.
Can you read that back? And whereas, let's do this now as a statement of, um, the, um, funding streams, the, um-
Read it from the beginning so we can get the-
Okay, huh?
Yeah, let's get it low.
Okay, so whereas the New York State School Boards Association is established as an organization to provide leadership, advocacy, and programs to school districts. And whereas school districts are under increasing financial duress and whereas among its core fun, uh, and whereas NISBA has a core, among, no, sloppy sentence. Core function is to serve as policy advocates for its member school boards.
Whereas the core function of its members.
Whereas the core function.
Yes, I like that word.
Can, can we strike the word financial? There's so much more involved in the policy you want them to advocate for than just the money.
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, I, 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 exactly what popped up to me.
All right. So, school districts are under increasing duress.
It's true.
It's true. Okay, so whereas, whereas school districts are under increasing duress and whereas the core function of NISBA is to serve as policy advocates for its member school boards. And now let's go on to the-
And whereas NISBA has accepted fund. Do you wanna make that a where, whereas or does that have to be in the, in the, in the-
We don't wanna make it accusatory, we just wanna make the statement that-
Yeah, it should not be accepting, that, that, that we, that, that is-
We need to use the word conflict as a common standard.
Right, that, that, that-
So that you set the stage.
Accepting-
Wait, you said something earlier.
Right, direct, divest itself from all present funding.
It's supposed to be part of the result.
Whereas, accepting.
There's another group here.
Whereas funding from state agencies represented-
Or federal, state or federal.
Federal or state agencies reflects a conflict of interest.
There you go. Pretty close.
Okay, so whereas, well, whereas-
It's, whereas accepting funding from federal or state agencies represented-
But not, uh, but no, it's, it's not, it's, uh, whereas NISBA accepting.
Doesn't that say that in there?
No, first, no, not yet.
I saw the Spears movie, what's it say now?
Whereas, so you met up like, whereas NISBA accepting federal or state agencies.
How about whereas any acceptance of federal or state funds?
Acceptance of any.
By NISBA.
Acceptance of any, not acceptance of-
By NISBA representing conflict of interest.
State or federal funds by NISBA representing conflict of interest.
You wanna leave that interest or conflict of interest with its coordination, leave it conscious, okay?
Whereas, so whereas any acceptance of state or federal funding represented-
Acceptance of any.
Whereas acceptance of any state or federal funding repri-
By NISBA.
I know, I got, I'm thinking of it. Whereas acceptance of any state or federal funding by NISBA represents conflict of interest. So now we're going to therefore be-
How about represents a conflict to NISBA membership?
A conflict of interest to NISBA membership? No.
I don't think so.
No, 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 cause it's not the membership that has the conflict, it's they have the conflict because then they provide, I think-
But it's a conflict for NISBA membership.
No, it's for the, it's the organization.
No, 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 I understand, but it's, it's like we're, we're the injured, we're the aggrieved party. The membership are the aggrieved party.
Yeah, I think it's gonna, it sort of makes it not flow as well. Yeah, I was gonna say is it conflict with its mission or something, but if it doesn't flow, let it stop at conflict.
Yeah, that's fine. Less is more.
And it wasn't even a good one.
I'm trying to view it as literature as well as advocacy, so, like, it matters, right? Whereas school board, it matters.
They were gonna let me do that. They were gonna, you were gonna let me capitalize without looking into it. Therefore, be it resolved. Okay, so now we're at the therefore be it resolved section, we're, we're doing great.
Cool. How many whereases are there?
There's one, two, three, four whereases.
And they're short.
They're short.
That's palatable.
So here, here's where we go with two different, uh, resolutions. One that says be it resolved with New Paul's Central School District, District, poll, law, and be it resolved that the membership of the New York State School Boards Association calls on NISBA.
Right, we're actually gonna need two versions because we do wanna publicize that this, this is a-
Because one is gonna be passed by us, or voted on, voted on by us tonight.
Well, can't it be part of the same, whereas the New Paul's Central School-
Can't we just write it as a NISBA member?
No.
No, we want this to be something that's on, that we store on our records that this was a resolution we took, a position we took as New Paul's, but we also want a version to submit.
Can us do it, whereas be it resolved that, let's do ours first. The New Paul's Central School District calls for, uh, thank you. Calls upon NISBA to, um, let's see, where was that statement I had?
Divest itself.
To divest itself from all present funding.
This is state, this is federal agencies.
They add and all-
Let him do this first and then fix the grammar.
Needs to be broader than SED.
Okay.
From state and federal agencies.
Yeah, you don't wanna just, oh, right.
Especially since SED got the money from, from the Department of Education, so.
Actually, SED, to divest itself from all present funding and reject all future funding.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah.
What about the idea of including, uh, state and federal as well as, um, private?
Yeah, I was thinking about how to, how to work that in.
We're waking up, and they're only gonna give the funding to do any kinds of workshops or membership, yeah.
But for now, but for now, I know what you're thinking, we don't want them getting, taking money from the Gates Foundation either, or the Walton Family Foundation, that's, I get what you're saying, or the Thomas, uh, Fordham Institute.
Right.
I, I get that.
But I think, that's again for the next portion.
I'm just. Some people won't be able to approve this.
Right, but we have an immediate issue.
So that's why, we're gonna cut our nose off, display our face.
Well, then can we, can we salvage it by not doing that, and instead of asking for them?
What do they need all this money for?
Accepting private funding.
Because if Federer gets paid ten, sixty thousand dollars a year, that's why they need to go rhetorical.
No, seriously, like.
If anybody wants to complain that who in education gets paid too much, I think we got a couple paid.
Well, the problem, the problem with, the problem with adding private funding, aside from what has already been said, is that private funding doesn't necessarily constitute a conflict of interest.
Right, you'd have, you'd have to check your case by the case per case basis, it's tricky.
Not.
So, how about if it just?
Where it's in conflict with, with.
How about if just?
It's like, what about all the rentals, like you have, it gets, it gets very convoluted when you approach the budget.
If it comes back.
I mean, I have to seize SED and to federal, so that's where we have the conflict.
Right.
Because we're. Their advocacy is to private.
The advocacy is to the legislature, that's it.
Right.
Right, right.
Right.
It's not necessarily to state education department, it's to where the elected laws are coming from.
Well, you know, it's, it's both, but it's certainly not to private sources, we don't advocate to private sources, they'll always be trying to advocate to us.
So if we just, if we clarify, so if we make it clear why we're saying it, cause that's a very valid point, is if you say reject all, um, future funding from state and federal agencies where, um.
That's a good point, yeah, we did add what Maria just said.
Where we're actually live advocating. Right, because I'm gonna put that in there so it's clear, why?
I wish Maria knew what she said.
Hold that thing.
Sorry. I would love to have it right now, but I'm afraid.
Is that ongoing or is that just now?
Yeah, it's where they're at, we're getting, they're getting money, it's from exactly the same place that they're advocating to, and that's the conflict.
Right, their job is to advocate on our behalf to the legislators.
Exactly, so we're still talking about the conflict.
But again, not just, let's not be that specific, not just to legis, to policymakers, it could be SED, it could be Artie Duncan, Department of Education, they have to advocate to a bunch of different sources, not just legislators.
Okay. How about policymakers, how about policymakers including legislators, legislative bodies?
And, and, and education.
And federal legislative bodies. And any policymakers. But policymakers sounds pretty broad, bro.
It also.
It is, but if you limit, if they're specifying legislatures, you all forgot, they're specifying education departments.
That's true, you're absolutely right.
Because the, the education department operates pretty independently from the legislature, both at the state and the federal level, it's not like Congress is monitoring every little policy that, that Artie Duncan is doing, that's not their job, so our advocates actually have to advocate to a lot more of those legislators.
Well, here's the problem, you have to be really careful, because now you're going over the line. And the New Paul Central School District absolutely needs to accept funding from the federal government and from the state government.
Right.
We need to get our Title I monies, our Title IV monies, we need to get our Eisenhower grants, we need to be able, when there's a competitive grant, I'm always looking for alternative funds.
Right. But this isn't for us, this is for NISBA.
So I know, but you have to be careful that it doesn't.
So I have a, I have a, a possible solution, which is begging it a little bit, um, and so, um, be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District calls in, NISBA to be held accountable to its member districts by providing advocacy annually on issues that impact the fiscal and just, I don't know, like law, that's like.
Oh, but now it's running, it's running, are we into, be it resolved part of that?
Can you, can you do that again?
Yeah.
Can you do that again?
Something went a little awry there.
Okay, so like, okay, let, let me just read from the beginning, okay, and where we are, and then I'll add on my vaguer end, and the vaguer end is really not asking them to do, you know, we're not necessarily specifying which monies we want them to accept or reject, we're getting into that whole idea of what is okay federal money and what is okay state money to take, and what is that, it's like, it's confusing.
Hold it, it's, we're separating us as a school district from our advocates, there is no money that it's okay for NISBA to take from federal or state government sources, zero, absolutely zero.
Now, they feel, or they said, I'm not sure if it was in the letter that you got or whatever, but that, it, it was their fiduciary responsibility to their members to accept the fund, to, to write for grants that would, would help the NISBA understand what was going on, and to get money to offset the cost of training. Therefore, that's why, that was what they were saying, is, an example they used was the, the, um, student initiative.
Right. Right, so we're declaring that to be a specious argument, we're saying that that's not true.
I'm just saying, let's figure out how to make sure this.
Well, especially if the money is, is, has to be used for a specific thing, like.
Right, it was, exactly, it's an earmark, it's an earmark grant, it's not like a general fund donation to use as you will, this was an earmarked program, and that's really where it's at, you know?
It was specific to.
Obvious.
Is that, that's what these kind of grants are always for, grants come for restricted purposes.
So it's not so much of where the money are coming from, it's who's directing how the money's spent, that you take, direct it from a state, how to spend that money.
Right, but then that adds extra language that you don't need, you limit yourself to saying, you don't take money from the agencies you're supposed to be advocating before, you know, that's, that's, that's the definition of a conflict.
Okay.
So what's their, they're saying they need money for, to pay for training, training for school board members?
No, they said, they put out, they do a variety of different workshops for school board members, and they've extended that to others.
That we pay for.
That you pay for, and they were saying that one of their responsibilities is to keep the school boards in the state apprised of all the new initiatives, the new requirements, the new mandates. And to, in order to do that, they do these different trainings throughout the state on items such as the Common Core learning standards, on privacy rights, they do law, um, workshops and a whole bunch of other things. And in order to not charge their members an additional fee for that, they look for alternative funding sources, I'm just, this is not me, this is their company line. And so if they're looking for alternative funding sources, if this comes down, and Common Core is something that school board members need to know about, so they can understand how are, how's my district implementing it, what should we be doing, you know, where are we, how does this fit with us, then they felt that it was their responsibility to write for this grant to offset the cost of these workshops, so school board members could go to it for free.
What I would say to that.
So the problem, I, I, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I think what you brought to the table, what I was told by someone who went to one of these is that it was an overview of the Common Core learning standards, talked about the shifts, and a lot of the materials, yes, were also types of things that are on, um, the Engage New York website. But it, but then they went into a panel, and they had panels of staff, like a superintendent and some staff members from two or three different districts, talking of different sizes, like a city, a, a small rural, and another one or just two. And depending on which area in the state they were doing it, and I never went to one, so I'm just telling you what they said, and they, as a panel, would say, in our district, this is what we took, this is how we're doing it, this is how we're implementing these standards, or we're creating the curriculum, or we're doing such and such. We've been asked to go to those workshops before and do presentations, especially when we came up with our, our, our standards and such the other side.
I think that's a perfectly reasonable explanation as to what is involved in their training, and to me, what that means is, we need, no, but I, I think what we need is our two associations.
But I don't know if that's true.
We can join the association that helps us with training, and they can get their money from wherever, and then we can join the association that advocates it on our behalf.
Right, so be it resolved.
And I would suggest.
They should, they can't be commingled, they're conflicting agendas.
Right, hold on a second. This program that's been going around, if it's, if it's, if the curriculum is, is designed by SED, the money for it is paid for by SED, let's be blunt. It could have been run by SED, and it should be run by that, hold on, let me finish, if SED has things that we need to know, and they're willing to pay to have us know it, so that we don't have to use district funds to learn it, and that's what they should be doing. They deliberately chose to create a program that was going to be operated by our traditional advocates. It was a political move on their part to send the funding over to NISBA, and the delivery system over to NISBA, instead of them doing it themselves, because they probably were thinking that a lot of people, less people, fewer districts would participate
And they also.
if it was an SED program, that people might feel suspicious, and so they deliberately bought their way into our agency to be able to gain that access to us, and it's completely inappropriate.
Can I just add one more piece to that, though, so that you have a bigger picture of it, state ed didn't just put these grants out, and NISBA didn't want to sell out and pull them in. They split them out, and Sanes, which is the state's principals, that goes under a federal, okay, Sanes did, picked it up, and they, they wrote for it, school boards did, I mean, you know, school boards, my association was it, superintendents, uh, New York State Council of School Superintendents did the same thing, now, we do have a staff development arm, which is separate from our, our group, and they don't usually just adopt it, but they do things in conjunction with state ed all the time. So that, I, so that's it, but they do the same thing, I'm saying, but one of the things that I think is important, and what we found out in our own, our own BOSIs, is that we entered a MAP initiative with BOSIs, and we were promised that it would be something that would provide collegial cross-district, um, work to bring it, to prepare us to be able to, to, um, create solid core curriculum, and we could do it regionally, and do you wanna just tell a little bit about that? I just want you to understand how this, we pulled out, by the way, I just want you to know, so that when you start to see, like, we did when we found out what it was like, but.
So I'm not sure where I'm going with this, but I can tell you about the initiative. Just talk about. Um, the MAP initiative, uh, that the BOSIs, um, put together was the Three Ape MAP Initiative, um, we, I've already expressed concern that un, you know, unpacking any standards through the eyes of module is not fair, because then it forces an adoption, they promised that it would, it would not be that way, uh, and yet when we would go to these sessions, it was evident that the professional development that was coming down was a canned kind of professional development, where you could see that.
Just go into what you were saying.
PowerPoints were, were being delivered, you know, all over the state, um, our teachers would be among other teachers in the community, and they would have this experience of delivering a, a broad curriculum and other teachers would be speaking in terms of the modules, and so, which discussion that they could have with their colleagues was not there, uh, so it was not delivered to us in the way that we thought it was.
And I wanna go there, but the bottom line is, what they brought is, and this is, this is, Rick can tell you, when we got the race to the top money, we had to sign away our lives, and for, like, a miniscule amount of money over a four-year period, we had to give it all to BOSIs, and they promised that they would get us the kinds of trainings we wanted, and what Steve is saying is pretty much what had happened. Our BOSIs people would go to these state trainings, come back and give us exactly what they said, and more and more, we were finding it didn't work for us. So basically, exactly, where the money went was to implement the programs exactly the way that these, these turnkey trainers were being taught to do it. So I think that it's a bigger problem than just NISBA, so, so I just want you to wear that.
NISBA, NISBA's where we're at right now, I'd like to get back to the language, this is a nine million dollar annual organization, so.
So, be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District Board of Ed calls upon NISBA to be held accountable to its member districts by providing full disclosure of its funding sources and to limit its advocacy to avoid impropriety.
Um, I actually had this, I had this conversation with, with.
Impropiety or something. Go with it, I just tried something.
Other, I wanna, I'm actually gonna have learned something, Maria will be able to recall, um, this time, no, you will.
Oh, that's what you. I hope so.
I'm gonna now actually attempt to have learned something in the process of holding this position in my first term. We have to be very careful with the word impropriety.
Yeah, I do remember.
Because it has different meanings as an ordinary English word, and it's a term of, alright.
So to, so limit its advocacy to avoid, why, so what we're saying is, tell us what you, okay.
I learned something. I used it once.
Not worth of interest, I'll put that back, we're not gonna do that. Yes.
There we go, cause I, I don't wanna have tapped into something.
Yeah, no, okay, read that back one more time.
Be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District Board of Ed calls upon NISBA to be held accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources and to limit its advocacy to avoid conflict of interest.
Can we add to it, um, an annual review of its advocacy performance?
Yes. I just asked her to look up, cause you said that you found no annual professional review or accountability.
Right, an annual review of its advocacy, uh, is, in, of its advocacy performance.
Every organization's looking to do that.
Nothing.
There's no problem.
Cause you all go like.
There are lots of reports that they do, and I do remember seeing a report at some point, which, um, it wasn't like a scorecard, it wasn't, it wasn't simple.
Right, but by performance, they're gonna, they're gonna, when they send stuff up now, up now, that's related to performance, it's always in the description of, here's what we've been working on.
But we can just say.
As I've mentioned before, you almost never find something coming from them that says, here's what we got done, and so, the, the performance review has to be focused on, you know, cause if you're gonna tell me that you've been fighting the, the WICs laws and the tri-baronment for the last twenty-six years, then maybe you wanna sort of defocus from those and work, you know what I mean, like, they're, they're not accomplishing it, you wanna review from them.
So, so it would say, be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District Board of Ed calls upon NISBA to be held accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources and to limit its advocacy to avoid conflict of interest, and further, to provide member school districts an annual professional review and accountability of its advocacy performance. Wow. We can clean up language now, or do you wanna do, is it, am I, am I, are we close, are we getting it through the chat?
I think we're very close.
Are we not now asking them to not accept funding from state and federal agencies?
I think we did, was that in the earlier part?
Yeah, uh, and it's also the second part, so whereas acceptance of any state or federal government, NISBA represents.
We don't think that, did we?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, oh, you read it from the beginning again, slowly and loudly.
Does somebody have a better louder voice, I know my voice is not.
Yeah, we can, we can.
We got a good voice.
Alright, I will start. Whereas the New York State School Boards Association is established as an organization, I'm saying associated, okay, I'm sorry, let me start over. Whereas the New York State School Boards Association is established as an organization to provide leadership, advocacy, and programs to school districts. And whereas school districts are under increasing duress, and whereas the core function of NISBA is to serve as policy advocates for its member school boards. And whereas acceptance of any state or federal funding by NISBA represents a conflict of interest, be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District Board of Ed calls upon NISBA to be held accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources and to limit its advocacy to avoid conflict of interest. And further, to provide member school districts an annual professional review and accountability of its advocacy performance.
There's something wrong with a full disclosure of its funding sources into advocacy.
Yeah. Yes, could it be focus its advocacy instead of limit, and focus its advocacy, um, you wanna know why I said limit, I said limit because you can't advocate for where you get your funding sources, couldn't see.
Well, the reason I have a problem with, with the word advocacy
So focus. Of focus advocacy before.
Is because the, the conflict is not in its advocacy, the conflict is in its funding.
Exactly, it is.
It is a conflict.
Between, it's between the two.
Because the funding.
Yeah.
So what you're, you're reversed advocacy.
Right, it's a.
So, you know, you can, if you can't advocate on something that you're getting a funding source from, so that's why we're saying focus its advocacy to avoid a conflict of interest. Or if the word is not focus, it could be, um, to.
Restrict.
Restrict, target.
Redirect.
Redirect, what words do you like?
Much section.
Okay, so.
Say the sentence again.
Did the sentence.
Be it, and I'll, I'll substitute.
You say focus, is focus one of the options?
Yes, focus, redirect, um, what was the other one that we said, just so I can read it for you.
There was one from you, like.
Restrict. Restrict and target, where were we?
Target, target.
I'm like, restrict or limit.
I'm going to it now. Be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District Board of Ed calls upon NISBA to be held accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources and to focus its advocacy to avoid conflict of interest, or, and to redirect its advocacy to avoid conflict of interest. Or, and to target, or to target its advocacy to focus.
Focus is the word. Focus. Focus is the word, focus.
I like.
Ding ding ding.
Can we, um, get rid of? Can we, um, get rid of that whereas that uses the word duress? Because I would want this resolution whether school districts were under duress or not.
Okay. Okay, done.
Makes it wrong.
I still have something.
You know why I wanted duress there? Because if there, if there are dollars to be had and they're spending it on stuff that is not helping us.
It's a different, different resolution.
Different resolution.
That's a different resolution, but I still have trouble with the flow of that sentence that contains the phrase focus to avoid, to, read that back to me, cause what just that one part?
It's kind of a point. A point, yeah.
Be it advocacy and avoid.
Yes, and avoid, I said, there was something about and avoid, and avoid, that's existing, thank you, thank you.
This is fun.
We have ready, sure, this is.
I still like the version.
Well, not for you, you gotta listen to everybody, but I love the collective wordsmithing on something so important.
Yeah. All right, so one more time, where, where do we have it?
So you want me to read it again?
No, not all the things.
It's important. I did read that, it's sure.
It's okay, but for now, this is actually, we just changed.
Or one word, it's only three, it's only three whereas's.
Yes.
That's good.
Yes.
Do I have two? Sold, there's only one.
Read it from the top.
It, it actually could be just two.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, read it from the top.
Read the title too.
Where, whereas the New.
The title, title.
Uh, we don't have title yet.
You did, you started the title.
No, I did, but I think it's gonna change, so anyway. Whereas the, I don't want to go with that title right now.
Okay.
Just do your, she's doing the resolution.
Whereas the New York State School Boards Association is established as an organization to provide leadership, advocacy and programs to school districts. And whereas the core function of NISBA is to serve as policy advocates for its member school boards. And whereas acceptance of any state or federal funding by NISBA represents a conflict of interest, be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District Board of Ed calls upon NISBA to be held accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources and to focus its advocacy to avoid conflicts of interest. Cause the and didn't work.
No, that's where, you know, cause it's advocacy.
Yes, and. So focus on the advocacy.
Providing a full disclosure of its funding sources, comma, strike the and.
Yeah.
Comma, to focus its advocacy and avoid conflicts of interest.
Okay, that works.
Okay, I want to get rid of the first whereas.
That's why I told you, we could get rid of it, right?
Get rid of it.
We could just start with whereas the core function of, is supposed to serve as policy advocates for its members' school boards.
All right, good, get rid of it.
Hey, really.
Yeah, start with your stronger message, that's it.
I do like that.
You lead with your, with your strongest statement.
Wes just had the resolution, you know, the.
So I'm sorry.
No, no, that's good, that's good, it's, it's.
You have that one whereas, like a.
We're, we're narrowing, we're narrowing their vision to what we think we should be, that's the best way to lead, yeah.
It's awesome, just do like that, that's good.
I like it like that.
And I don't like to be held accountable, but to be accountable.
Yeah, to be accountable.
Instead of be held accountable.
Right, to be accountable.
It didn't, my grammar, it's been like anyway. So should I read it to?
Read it to everybody, then email it to Dusty.
And then. And then what we can, but what we can do also, we can, we can, um, approve it with, you know, minor corrections only is another thing too. So does any, like small grammar or no?
Oh, grammar we're gonna fix, cause I'm a former English.
Whereas the core function of NISBA is to serve as policy advocates for its member school boards. And whereas acceptance of any state or federal funding by NISBA represents a conflict of interest, be it resolved that the New Paul Central School District Board of Ed calls upon NISBA to be accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources to focus its advocacy and avoid conflicts of interest. And further, to provide member school districts an annual professional review and accountability of its advocacy performance.
Can we leave it further?
I think it's good. So we don't have to say and further, we could just say and to provide, I just hate starting that, starting anywhere with the and, can you start with that and word?
Um, can you, can you get a semi-call in?
It's a long sentence.
That'd be a long.
I know, but you know, so.
Can you make it three sentences?
Why not not be it further resolved?
Further resolved.
And be it further resolved.
Okay.
That just breaks it up so it's a.
That doesn't, that doesn't too, yeah, just was kind of awkward that other way, so.
That's the name of her, her dodgeball.
It was.
Good for the resolve, did I know?
It's a good name.
Be it further resolved.
Further resolved.
Yes, it was a good name.
I think you did, that's a keeper.
And we, we didn't, do you?
We keep forgetting to practice those.
Amy, did you, they tell you about that, that you're gonna have to play next year?
I saw it last year. I'm not looking at it, you wait.
No, he doesn't have to, she's a mascot if she wants.
Okay. She'd be a mascot.
We're the manager, he can always be the manager.
Dog.
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 I like that.
Should I read it? See, I'm still kind of stuck on this. Okay, look, what's the title? Well, this is not a New Paul's resolution now, so, I mean, although, well, this one is, but this doesn't.
Well, this, this is.
It's newly changed.
Do we need titles of our resolutions?
Um.
Oh, yes, we do.
How about if we started with the classic line, a resolution by the New Paul Central School District.
Resolution for NISBA. How about resolution for NISBA accountability?
I like.
A little accusatory.
Okay.
About concern of the direction of NISBA or concern.
Resolution requesting.
What are you asking for?
This says.
Accountability and. We're asking for accountability and conflict of interest. So it's all about, um, so it's, it is asking for accountability.
And we're asking for, we're advocating for focused advocacy.
Yeah.
Advocacy. Oh, focus, yeah, requesting focused advocacy by NISBA, uh, again.
For NISBA to provide focused advocacy.
But you could actually spell that out, the New York State School Boards Association.
Wordsmith. It's a member, uh.
Request, so resolution requesting NISBA to provide focused advocacy for its member school boards?
Can we spell out, can we spell out in the title, NISBA, New York, New York State School Boards Association?
That's what we're asking for.
Yeah, no, we would do that, I'm just, I'm doing it slow or I'm doing it this way, all of it can be pulled out, put together in, in appropriate ways. Throughout, wherever it is today, I'm not gonna, I will look it over for you. Okay, so right now the working title is requesting NISBA to provide focused advocacy for its member school boards. Have you want focused advocacy?
Sounds like a plan to me.
Or is it, or is it that we kinda have, um.
Isn't, isn't the old email ad, if you tell them what you're gonna say, then you tell them, then you tell them again?
I was wondering if you'd like to have conflict of interest in the title.
I don't want conflict of interest in it at all.
And the purpose of a title, actually, for your book is to be able to, um, look it up later on if somebody wants to see it and stuff. But for them, I don't know, it's okay.
I like that, okay, so it's a resolution, so it's.
Now, you want, you want to move that so that it's our resolution first and then you want to do one and promote it, to have it proposed to this school.
That will attempt to, it, uh, put on the floor.
So you want two motions or one, Mr. President?
We'll do two motions.
I can change one, I wish to one.
Uh, so we have a motion to accept resolution requesting NISBA, stop.
Sorry.
Well, I focus, focused advocacy for its member school boards as amended.
So moved.
One second. Discussion, you know, one we've already had. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That's a seven zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Steve. That's gonna seem mean, but this is a very simple fix. Be it resolved that the membership of the New York State, State, the New York State School Boards Association calls upon the executive board.
Membership of, um.
Membership with NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association.
The New York State School Boards Association. Call it executive.
Calls upon the executive board of NISBA. To be accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources to focus its advocacy and avoid conflicts of interest.
Same, yeah.
Yeah.
Be it further.
And be it further resolved that the membership of NISBA calls upon the executive board of NISBA.
We didn't change it without saving it separately so that.
No, I have it too, I have, I have it too.
Okay, I'll just save it.
This is a very modern school board, save two separate documents.
No, no, it's, it's one document, but I have it, I copied it correctly and I edited it.
Two places.
That's good, because I've not done that before and then, which should I add?
No, no.
And all the hard work without.
No, no, see, look, here it is, it's short, it's long.
I trust you, I absolutely trust you.
Just sub, read your pages, let them see that.
Oh, shit, I'm sure that there is no power outage to save this right now.
Yeah, bricks tuck, you say every time you turn it in.
So let me just clean up a little and I will, now, you want me to read the one from, uh, the membership organization?
Just, just the resolve.
Rest is the same.
All right. So be it resolved that the membership of the New York State School Boards Association calls upon the executive board of NISBA to be accountable to its member districts by providing a full disclosure of its funding sources to focus its advocacy and avoid conflicts of interest. And be it further resolved that the membership of NISBA calls upon the executive board of NISBA to be held accountable to member districts by providing advocacy and belief on unfunded man.
That's the first.
To provide member school districts an annual professional review and accountability of its advocacy performance, sorry. I heard.
You're reading like an old draft, yeah.
I did, I'm trying to do the, and it took us a long place.
So that's the one we're gonna get two-thirds support from.
I've got exactly ten days to make that two-thirds support happen.
Yeah, a motion to approve the second.
Well, which one is that, that one is also gonna be called, um, requesting NISBA to provide focused advocacy for its member school boards. So they're both called the same thing.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So I can have a motion to approve the second amended resolution, uh, to be read and proposed by Mr. Greenfield on the floor of the respective convention.
So.
All that information's actually rest in just.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That's a seven zero, thank you.
Next week we'll come to you, we'll have everything in here, so that you'll have a BoS.
You know. Can you pull out here?
Yeah, I.
Just put the addendum.
Looks like a straight line.
I had one question. If it's personal, we have to, it's, it's general.
So let's move in and discuss.
Yeah.
I have a motion for item seven dot one through.
You didn't do the minutes yet.
We didn't do the minutes yet, thank you, Nick.
No.
I have a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of October first and the special meeting of October eighth.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's a seven zero. Now, I have a motion for item seven dot one through seven dot eleven.
That's the right question, just on the opposition.
Move it first.
And move it first and then second, and then that we can go. And Rick will be going to answer your question.
So, something like that?
Amy, we did, I'll second that, discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Um, what is under some kind of sector of the sound, technician, technician?
Oh, yeah, um, what we do is, we have, um, generally students who do the lighting or sound in the auditorium when upside groups are using it. Basically to, we want our, our staff to do it.
We don't want other people touching our staff.
And that's the name it came up with many years ago.
Gotcha. So that's a student?
Yeah, generally they're students, they're, could be an adult, but it's a higher rate of pay, it's almost always been students.
Because they. The reason why we want students, it gives them real world work and they're not slaves, there's no reason they should, if you're gonna pay an adult to do that, why would we pay our students to do that?
And they know this very well.
And they take great pride in our stuff, so.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That's a seven zero, thank you. This is some old business, item eight dot one, request for approval of bus bond proposition. Resolution authorizing purchase of six school buses for use by the New Paul Central School District at a maximum estimated cost of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-four cents. Authorizing issuance of obligations to said school district in any amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, four, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-four cents to pay the cost thereof.
Very seeking that motion.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
I'm listening.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just a clerical thing, like two zeros at the end of the first number, there's two extra zeros here.
Are there tens of a cent?
Yeah, zero, yeah, tens and hundreds of cents.
Typo, get rid of the two of the zeros.
Right here.
Any other staff? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a seven zero, thank you. Item nine dot one, request for approval of committee on special education recommendations and student placements. Be it resolved, Board of Education, the New Paul Central School District, approve the committee on special education and committee on preschool special education recommendations and student placements, have a motion, Nick.
So.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a seven zero.
Yes.
Item nine dot two, request for approval to award bid, New Paul Central Schools, Board of Education, recommendation of arena rice for attending schools, thus hereby award the bid of the museum for, the museum for inner replacement two, do we have this information yet?
Yes, right here.
I think I did.
Did you put the ones that are close?
No, maybe I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the one, okay. Two, Duchess Tech Cut Industries for a total price of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I have a motion.
Move it.
Sorry.
Discussion?
Discussion, so, uh, we're just buying new oil burners for heat and hot water?
Uh, these are the burners that will allow those to use both fuel oil and natural gas.
Is there natural gases, do you see?
There is now, but it's not connected until we have these burners. You know, right, and again, natural gases can run, but they're not connected to the burners yet, cause you have to convert the burners to do that.
So, we're doing this for what reason, uh, what's, what's the status of the existing oil burner?
Uh, we're doing it basically to save money, um, the estimates we have, and I'll take the big green assault, um, from Southern Hudson's, will save about forty-eight thousand a year, I'm anticipating it's more than half a year, but it will still pay for itself very quickly. Uh, because right now the cost of this year, natural gas is cheaper, but we want to have both fuel capabilities, we have a middle school, because in the future, fuel oil may be cheaper.
Right, but.
It's the same thing we did in the high school.
I know, I know, and, and I had trouble with that then, because how much life is there with the existing oil burner?
I.
Like, it, does it need to be replaced? Does it need to, like, why are we spending fifty thousand dollars?
Because we'd repoop the money in no time if operating.
That's assuming, that's assuming we're making a bet on the, the price of a commodity. But meanwhile, like, oil has gone down significantly, uh, and, and natural gas has gone up significantly.
But the overall plan has been, over the past years, to have the ability to whichever fuel is cheaper. And so this just finalizes it.
So we're spending, we're spending fifty thousand dollars on that optionality though, but meanwhile, the prices are going the opposite directions.
Well. Well, half a nat, um, natural gas ration locked in for a low price for twenty-four months and only about three weeks. Well, half a nat-, um, natural gas ration locked in for low price for twenty-four months, and only about three months of that. So that won't go up, now, fuel oil could change.
I, I would just really like to see, like, an analysis of this, I, I, I would like to see an analysis of, at what prices does it make sense to spend fifty thousand dollars?
I'm curious to, Tim asked, um, what the condition of the burner is now, at Dusy, is it at its end of life, needs to be replaced?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, truth.
Now, this is part of an overall plan that was instituted many years ago, and we're doing these transitions. So far, we started with having the option to go either oil or gas, in the middle school only. Then, the next, we finally were able to get the option for gas or oil at the high school. We had the option for the, for the gas, but we needed this last part to be able to, we had both lines, but this would finalize to have the option for whichever fuel source is less expensive. And that was just part of an overall plan, that rightly so, was done before Tim was on the board, as well as others, so this is just finalizing that.
And before natural gas has gone up significantly and oil has gone down significantly.
That's absolutely true, but Steve has the questions.
I have a question. The existing burners, um, not at the end of their useful lifespan, what would be the procedure for disposing of them? Would they go to scrap metal, would you seek a buyer on the used burner market, how would you get rid of the?
We don't want them to be at the end of the life, so that we have the option to go back and.
No, I'm just asking that if we put these new ones in, we're gonna have.
They're probably, they're, we're probably not replacing the burners, we're just probably.
Oh, oh, yeah, I see, just like I'm sorry.
They're gonna stay in place, we're buying a new one, the old ones are staying in place, they're not gonna be.
I, I may have misspoken, let's ask for it.
That, that's more technical than I can answer to.
Alright, I would like to propose that we delay this vote pending answers to those questions, um, they are germane to how I would vote, both of those questions, the one Tim asked and the one that I just asked.
Can we just review what exactly the questions are, just, because I feel like one had lost.
I'll wait for Tim, who has.
But it doesn't seem like there's an actual issue with, and, and maybe this is more technical, as you said, than, than we have information on. But it doesn't seem like there's an issue with the burner as at the end of its life, it seems like what we're buying is, right, so it seems like what we're buying is the optionality to hook up a new gun that can burn two different types of fuels.
Yes, I think that's true.
So we're basically spending fifty thousand dollars on a commodity spent.
That is not, that is not a sure thing, that is by no means a sure thing, as, as written in the Times yesterday about how OPEC is in disarray, and that oil's now down to eighty dollars a barrel, it was only, it was a hundred dollars a barrel a year ago, who knows where it's going, you know, it's.
That's what I thought the question was, but I thought. Right. Right.
It's locked in for twenty-four months.
You know, but still, there's none.
I may have misspoken.
Okay, that's, that's what I.
My question is about what will be the disposition of the existing burners if this change is made.
There is, there is a motion. Well, we need to double check this, but I don't think it's about the condition of the burners, it's about the gun.
I don't think it's about, but I think, I, 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 I wanna know if we're getting burners that have, no, we are buying, buying burners, that's what we're being asked to approve, so.
We're gonna replace.
I wanna know if they're, if they're, if they're a flex fuel, if these are flex fueled burners, which will actually render our existing burners obsolete and taking up space, or if they're purely gas burners, and then the two will be available to work, you know, in tandem, I actually.
Okay, so, so, uh, do we wanna take these motion until the next meeting, have any more information?
Rick, can you get the information, yeah, Steve?
Yeah, well, I wanna, at some point, I wanna get the two questions, I have one, I think, I wanna make sure I have the two questions.
Yeah, I think it's about where we have the information.
So I wanna know the life, the life of the, the existing burner.
Okay, life of the existing, okay.
What are we buying, are we buying new burners, or are we just buying optionality?
Well, we're buying new burners.
Buying optionality, it's just buying a gun, we're, we're, right. For natural burn.
Can we get Steve down here into the next meeting?
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely, that's why I just wanna make sure that he understands, but he should know the answer to all of this.
Yes.
Okay.
So I have three questions written down, I wanna.
And then I want, I also, I also want some sort of analysis on the price of heating oil, the price of natural gas, and what we're paying, you know, just because I've asked, when we looked at it for the high school.
Right, and my question is that since, it says burner replacement twice in this resolution, that's the word, replacement, supplement, so.
I believe it's a buy new burner.
And, and.
I do, I do too, because that's what went out to bid, so we should get the stack.
We'll find out, we'll find out.
Right, no, but there's, but, but the word replacement implies that the new burner will be able to have two different fuels operated, and that the other one won't be used anymore. Because, I'm trying to determine, are we going to end up with unused burners that we will either leave in place or dispose of? Or are these supplements to allow the use of gas, and we're gonna be able to continue using the burners, they have the word replacement, so I just like to know what is the intended disposition of the existing burners that these would replace?
A little worse.
Um, being a little, uh, wasteful conscious and stuff like that.
Right, so I have. Number, I need my four questions, see if I have it right.
Yeah. There's five.
Oh, okay.
So tell your, us your.
Alright, I have the, the one that you just said, what will be the status of these existing burners, what, what are we gonna do with them? Um, number two, what is the life of the existing burners? How much life is left? Or the end of life, or how much is left? Uh, number three, are we actually buying new burners or just the gun? And number four, analysis of, uh, the heating oil versus natural gas cost. Analysis.
I have one, divide it up, it's your right.
So, is that, you got them all?
You know, it's an interesting thing, you know, you try to analyze this stuff, the, the, the price of, when, when you look at the price of gas as a commodity, it is based on its existing supply in relation to its existing demand, and so if every school and every building in America converted to gas for generating its heat, that would send the price skyrocketing, so we're actually asking ourselves if we wanna participate with something, and, and, and the cost, the cost of the thing that we would be fueling it with, um, is largely dependent on just how much this kind of process catches on all over the place. So, you know, I know that you're saying we have a twenty-four month locked price, but we always wanna look beyond that, we wanna look to what it's gonna be for the lifespan of the entire picture, not just what we're gonna be doing for the next two years, it's a pretty important decision.
Yeah, but truly, that's the benefit of having a dual fuel vehicle, it has the flexibility. But there's, there's gonna be a repression to the meme, there's gonna be, it's a.
Not, it doesn't pay for itself. Yeah, not, it doesn't pay for itself, it doesn't.
The BTUs are gonna cost what BTUs cost.
So, anyway, the information is germane, so I'd like to wait until we have that, that's all.
Sure.
And not be able to put it at this time, is what I'm saying.
So. We table it to the next, so that it's be tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. Item three, request for approval to sell, dispose of surplus equipment. Be it resolved, Board of Education declares following vehicles and equipment as surplus property and authorizes the sale or disposition of said equipment. Have a motion.
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I'm sorry, going back to the last thing, could you, one more question, the, the efficiency of the old unit.
So it's approved?
Yes.
It's not really, it's not.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that she can finish her.
The efficiencies of the old burners versus the new.
Good.
Okay. Item four, request for approval of settlement agreement, be it resolved, New Paul Central School District Board of Education hereby approves and ratifies a settlement agreement in the matter of student number one-one-zero-five-zero, effective Monday, October thirteenth, twenty fourteen, be it further resolved, superintendent, superintendent of schools is authorized to sign this settlement agreement on the board's behalf.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Pass the seven zero. Item nine point five, request for approval of settlement agreement, be it resolved, Board hereby approves and ratifies a settlement agreement in the matter of student number one-two-nine-zero-six, effective Monday, October thirteenth, twenty fourteen, be it further resolved, that the superintendent of schools is authorized to sign this settlement agreement on the board's behalf. No motion?
I'll move it, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Pass the seven zero. Other discussion? There is none. Back to public comments.
You should ask about the maintenance on that new, the new unit, like, a lot of new things don't work as well as old things, actually.
You anticipated maintenance expenses for an old burner versus what?
Yeah, like, is it gonna have all sorts of chips in it that are gonna cause problems and cost two thousand dollars a clip to repair?
Yeah, like your washing machines.
Three brand new ones last year, I just bought a brand new two thousand dollar saw, and it's already got problems, so.
No, that's true, it controls.
Very true today.
Washing machines and drawers.
Thank you.
I hope so, I can make you answer that.
Yeah, wait until the, the next thing, when it's on the agenda.
Executive session, there is none. Have a motion, who's there?
I'll move that. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass the seven zero, thank you.